All right, I'd like to reconvene the meeting of the St. Mary's County Board of Education for Wednesday, August 9th, 2017, and we will begin with the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, may I have a motion to approve the agenda as presented?
I move approval of the agenda as presented.
Do I have a second?
I second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
I pose. Motion carried. We'll start with board reports. Hello, how are you?
Good, how are you?
I'm good.
So recently, I got a chance to attend the Lunch and Learn program at Lexington Park, and then I got to briefly witness the New Horizons program as well, because those were occurring at the same time. And the Lunch and Learn program, it occurs at Carver and Lexington Park from, it was June 27th to August 17th, so it's ending pretty soon. And when I had come, they were doing a presentation on outdoor safety, so the presenter was explaining about, you know, dangerous and harmful, and then safe, flora and fauna outside. So they even got to go outside because it was a very hot summer day, but it was still, you know, it wasn't raining or anything like that. And with the New Horizons program, it was, it's a program that I think will be ending soon, or has ended, and it's a five-week camp for children with disabilities, various disabilities. So they were doing arts and crafts, music, and other activities when I had gone. And the thing that had shocked me most was that, at both camps, I saw students from Great Mills High School in Choptikon volunteering, and it was alumni, so kids who had already graduated, and then current volunteers. So I had gone to both camps in previous summers, but I was pleased to see that every year, they still managed to get a lot of support from, you know, students who just want to volunteer, and students who just want to help out over the summer. And they do a great job throughout the year of advertising it, so we get a lot of opportunities to know what's going around and what we can help with. It was a great program.
I also had the opportunity to go to a camp. It was Camp Inspire. Mr. Rocco Aiola, I'm sorry if I-
Aiello.
Aiello, I'm sorry if I pronounced it incorrectly. He is the adoptive PE teacher for the St. Mary's County Public Schools. Wonderful man with a vision. It's in cooperation with Parks and Recs, and also does some, wow, lights came on. Some things for students, so they, that have IEPs, so let's say if they have a certain thing they need to work on, that is also done at the camp, like extended school year. I had the opportunity to see the camp several, I guess it was about nine years ago, when it started out as a two-week camp. It was one week for older children and one week for younger children. It has come a long way, oh, a long way, it's several weeks now. And also peers are able, they're able to bring their peers, or siblings, or a friend along with them. We are going to get more information about this great camp during the information item time, but it was wonderful to see everything, see it in action. So looking forward to our slide presentation later on.
I wanted to just sort of embellish a little bit about what I saw and learned in Italy. A couple of things that really stood out when I was there. My wife, who's a retired schoolteacher, and several of our friends were schoolteachers, retired schoolteachers from Italy. And so what we talked about is, and what we were asking and trying to observe is some of the contrast between the educational system in Italy as compared to the United States. And I stress the word "observation" because it's completely anecdotal, no scientific data analysis, anything like that. What, what I think we determined was that the educational system in Europe, and in particular, in Italy, is excellent, excellent educational system. There was one major contrast between our, in my, my view anyways, between United States educational programs and those in Italy, and that was special needs. It was quite interesting. One of our friends had a son that had special needs, he A D, A D A D problems. He came here to the United States for training in the summertime. The parents fortunately were, had the wherewithal to send their child. But things that like we have here at Fairlead Academy, special need programs that we offer to the kids in this country are seemingly absent in Italy. So we came, we came back with a special appreciation of what we're doing for the kids here in this country. Nobody's, hopefully, nobody's fallen through the cracks.
I would like to take my time to welcome back the Chesapeake Public Charter School. We began classes this morning in their newly renovated and added-on building, so hopefully we need our livestream camera, don't know, as we watch the students arrive. So good luck to everyone today, and I'm sure there will be a lot of hired children, students, and teachers and administrators this evening. Good luck.
Mrs. Weaver and I visited Camp Inspire, and it was my pleasure to visit the camp, and it was held at Green Holly Elementary School. Mr. Rocco Aiello is the enthusiastic camp director, who is overflowing with accolades about the program. His enthusiasm is addictive, and I saw for myself the undeniable benefits of the camp. Mr. Aiello is also the coordinator of adaptive physical education for St. Mary's County Public Schools in the Special Education Department. The assistant camp director is Ms. Anna Porter, who is a par educator at Choptikon High School. Camp Inspire is for students with autism from ages four through 21. It is a four-week program where students learn, socialize, and have fun. Students participate in activities such as dancing, art, inclusive games, canoeing, and physical ed, physical activities. The three main focuses are fun, socialization, and fundamentals. Through the program, students develop teamwork skills, social skills, and cooperation. These are the skills that employers are looking for, and these students are learning these skills at Camp Inspire. Volunteers for the program range in age from seven years upward. In order to be a volunteer at the camp, the volunteers must meet certain qualifications and be trained specifically for the program. Some of the volunteers have children or family members in the program. Camp Inspire has 45 students, 18 peers, and 21 instructors. Most of the instructors work for St. Mary's County Public Schools. Since music is vital, the students with autism, there is a music educator, Mrs. Liz Smith. Ms. Smith's music class had a floor piano, where students walk on the keyboard and it makes music. The students really enjoyed the sounds and interaction with the floor piano. Mrs. Smith works at Margaret Brandt Middle School. She said music helped the students develop their communication skills. Quote, "Our students are moving and grooving," said Mr. Aiello, and they were. He also said, "I have the right people working with my students." He considered the students his students, and he takes great pride in their accomplishments and learning. The students were having a fun time. Everything done at Camp Inspire is research-based, according to Mr. Aiello. I could clearly see in every classroom that I visited that the students were happy and actively engaged in a variety of activities. Thanks to Mr. Aiello, camp director, Ms. Porter, assistant camp director, Mr. David Sapp, teacher at Esperanza Middle School, Mr. Shay Fraser, teacher at Lenartown Middle, Morgan Slade, a student at Lexington Park Elementary, and a volunteer. And I want to thank all the volunteers, all the school system employees who helped to make Camp Inspire a wonderful and fun experience for our students during the summer break. Thank you educators for spending your time off, which we know our educators really don't have time off during this summer, but they took time to help our students. Thanks to Mrs., uh, excuse me, that's Dr. Adams now, the principal at Green Holly Elementary School, for graciously permitting the Camp Inspire to be hosted at her school site. The camp was a wonderful experience for our students, and I enjoyed visiting the camp.
I took some time and went to the Forest Center a couple of weeks ago to visit CyberCamp. We are able to provide this through a grant from the Office of Naval Research that we were, that was made available to us through the Patuxent Partnership. And on that particular day, Ron Tucker, who is a, works at Pax River in cybersecurity, came and brought a number of items for the students to pass around, take a look at. He talked about how cyber warfare is utilized to protect aircraft, and what his particular expertise is in that, and it was really enjoyable. I got to see a number of different items, and just two days later, had the opportunity to go on base for a different reason, but to tour the Test V-22, the Osprey aircraft. And so I was able to see several of the things that Mr. Tucker shared with us at CyberCamp, actually on the aircraft. It was really nice to hear about it, understand how the pieces worked, and then to see them utilize, see where they were on the aircraft. Pretty neat. Number of students in the class, and they really seemed like they were enjoying it.
That's a, that's a great summer program, and it's a great partnership with the Patuxent Partnership. And I believe we're bringing the Patuxent Partners in September back, before the board to talk a little bit about the partnership and the contributions they make, St. Mary's County Public Schools. Busy summer. All the 11th, 11-month employees that reported to work, and now we're really getting into that last push to make sure that everything is just right. I went out and visited our newest principals, Ms. Julie Steele up at White Marsh, and Ms. Doctor J.R. Beavers over at Dinerd Elementary School, and Kaki Maluski, who was at Town Creek, and then she became a reading supervisor, and now she's at Oakville Elementary School. See how they are all settling in. And at the latter part of last week, I stopped by and saw Ms. Jill Mills at Lenartown High School, and took a tour of the building, and saw all the progression of the, of the summer work, really wonderful. I concluded my week last week with having a lovely conversation with Dr. Maureen Murphy, the new principal, or the new principal, the new president of the College of Southern Maryland, and it was a really great conversation. She is definitely going to be building on the wonderful work of the outgoing president, Dr. Gottfried. I think that we're going to really have a lovely relationship. One of the things I said is, once we get all organized and we get up and running, she is very interested in coming and touring a whole host of our schools to see our staff and our students, and the wonderful learning that they find themselves. So we are getting close. We're, Dr. Mar is giving me a look. Does Dr. Mar actually have some pictures? I believe, so we'll finish with, we'll finish with a start. So Chesapeake Public Charter School is starting. We see a couple of pictures. I believe that is of students being dropped off to start their day. We have kids settling in. That's absolutely wonderful, so they are off to a great start. I know that later today, we are going to have staff that comes out and visits them as they conclude their day. We'll be filling our Twitter feed, and we'll probably update some of the social media that we have for the school system to show those kids leaving for their very first day. So it's a, it's been, it's been a very productive summer. So all of our camps are drawing to a close, and they will be concluding by the end of next week. One of the, I know that we have the invitation out to the Board of Education, I put it out to the, to the public and the press as well. The gathering, which started its work last month and continues, their culminating event is next Friday at the college, at St. Mary's College, and that's always a really wonderful opportunity to see our kids display their incredible creative talents and show the work that they've done over the summer. So that'll be probably the last thing that we have for our summer work. So thank you.
All right, let's see, do we have any public comment? Okay, all right, then we will move on. May I have a motion regarding the consent agenda?
I move approval of the consent agenda as presented.
Do I have a second?
I second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
I pose. All right, and right into testing. Mr. Jaffray, or Dr. Jaffray?
Nope, it's just Mr. Jaffray for right now. We're, we are working on it. We are working on it. We'll be lousy with doctors in another, in another two months, three months.
Start a school and go straight into PS and SATs. Got to love it.
So again, before the board, good morning. Talk about our preliminary SAT, which is the PSAT, NMSQT, and also the SAT for this upcoming year. As, probably very familiar with this, the SAT is a, an assessment that we administer to students in grades 10, 11 in our county. It's a standardized test that provides firsthand practice for the SAT, and also gives students a chance to enter the NMSQ, NMSC, which is the National Merit Scholarship Corporation, so that they can gain access to college and career planning tools. This assessment measures critical reading skills, math problem-solving skills, and writing skills. SMCPS will also provide the SAT to students in grade 11 this year. We are going to a one-day SAT administration, hopefully, that's what I'd like to propose this morning, as it is a standardized test, an entrance exam, which is used by most colleges and universities to make admissions decisions. Two SAT sections, math, evidence-based reading, and writing. Also will be used as a grade 11 end-of-year assessment for college and career readiness. So the hope is to kill two birds with one proverbial stone, if you will. We also have the college and career readiness test, which is the CCR, and we are hoping that the SAT, which is much more globally accepted at colleges and universities, including the community college, unlike the PARC Algebra II, which is presently our CCR assessment, we would like this SAT to replace that PARC Algebra II test that we normally administer in the spring for our Algebra II students as a representation of the CCR portion as that college acceptance threshold. And so we're hoping that the SAT can serve two masters, the college admissions, as well as meeting the expectations for CCR from the state. In the past, SMCPS had only administered the PSAT, the 10 and 11, and changes to the 2015 PSAT include changes to the format of the exam. Psychometricians have said that there is a one-to-one correlation between PSAT performance and SAT performance. So the hope is, if we administer the PSAT in October, we have October through the month of March, when we expect to administer the SAT, to prepare adequately for the SAT through means of other college board, such as the Khan Academy resource, perhaps throughout One Lunch and things of that nature, that students will be optimal and be very prepared at that March administration. The SAT is sort of a gatekeeper to SAT, and talking with college board, you know, said, well, this is going to be a high threshold, because we are expecting our scores, while we're getting more students to sit for the test and the SAT, we're expecting our scores probably take a hit, because we have more students sitting for the test. And college board, like I believe Scott and everyone on the team feels that we want to be as inclusive as possible, to give everybody an opportunity to sit for the SAT, and that's college boards, that's their bailiwick. They do not want us to be exclusive at all. They want special needs students to sit for the test, they want all disaggregated cohorts to sit for the test, to give everyone an opportunity. So we have a broad sweep of, of an administration. So that's the plan moving forward. And the idea is that this will be the first year in the history of the St. Mary's County Public Schools that we will actually administer the test to all 11th graders that are sitting on our rolls. The benefits, the SAT, which is, it also helps for us to qualify for scholarships for those students in 10th grade and 11th grade, as well as practicing for this SAT assessment. One thing, because the college board has adopted all the common core standards, we see that what we do in our classrooms completely correlates, aligns with the administration of the SAT, so we don't have to do a lot of external preparation for the test. Meaning what we do, embed the SAT preparation in our courses, actually prepares us adequately for SAT performance. We will also use the PSAT to identify students that will sit for future Advanced Placement coursework through the tool known as AP Potential. So we basically can set our own thresholds to see who would say, basically, that we had not thought of as a PSAT student or an AP student before the PSAT administration. We can then say, well, maybe this kid's now on our radar to take AP courses, and sometimes with AP, you have to take a lot of prerequisite courses before you sit in that course. That's the hope, we're hoping that we can identify these students early through PSAT results, so that we can get them sitting for these prereq courses, so that they can take things like AP Calculus as a senior. Down the page, we can see that the Khan Academy will be fully synced with their PSAT score, so we, in these four categories that say math, that we see some weakness or strength, the students can then itemize and sort of personalize their tutorial towards the SAT, or retaking of the SAT in the spring with this sort of very personalized tutorial performance that Khan Academy spits based on PSAT. So it's really, PSAT feeds into Khan Academy, Khan Academy looks at strengths and weaknesses, and they, they in turn spit out a very personalized tutorial performance for students to really focus on their strengths and weaknesses. Again, SMCPS will provide all students the opportunity to take the SAT at no cost to the student, and this is at a huge discount to what I would normally pay as a parent. That would be, it's mitigated in the cost, and it's very, very much beneficial for, for parents and households in this county. Fee calculation for the PSAT is as such, and because we have a high percentage of farm students in our district, we are, the unit assessment, or the unit price for this is at $13 with one grade tested. And they say with one grade tested, it's, it's the idea that even though we do have two tests, or two grade, grade levels that are tested, we, that's the fee structure that they provided based on our farm population and enrollment. Fee calculation for the SAT is as such, and I think the next slide sort of discusses exactly what, what the fee structure would be. The discount gives, gives us a test, $33 per unit, which is a huge discount to what we would normally pay, whether it be singular, like as a household, or even as what we've noted here on this, greater than 75%. You can see that everything is SAT. We're going to do the SAT without the SA, so we don't have the SA portion, part of the, as part of this quote here. And the expenses for all these are synthesized in this last sheet, where we have a discount of PSAT 10th and 11th grade. And we normally have that expense every year, the 10th and 11th grade. For this year, the SAT, which is the fixed fee without the SA, that comes at a rate of $13 per unit, and the, that's why we have an additional cost for this year. We would like to administer the SAT to all sitting 11th graders. And I'm, we'd like the board to approve this action, this agenda item as presented.
I wasn't sure.
You keep changing it up.
Oh, that's right, I know, I haven't gone back and forth.
Just to confirm, you said that this would be the first time that all 11th graders will be taking the SA, will be administered the SAT, correct?
Yeah, for, for St. Mary's County, in the history of that St. Mary's County Public Schools, we will provide, the county will provide an opportunity for everyone to sit for this test, that's correct.
And would that be happening with 10th graders in the future, or is that, sorry?
That's a good question. I think, based on my research and understanding, we want students to take the SAT at the latest point possible. I believe that we may open that opportunity for 10th graders, if they would like to pay for that on their own, to sit for that test. I don't believe, that would be my recommendation, to have 10th graders sit for the test. The later and the longer that we delay this, the administration of SAT, higher the, the performance of any.
And after they take the test, will they, after the tests are graded, obviously, will they be receiving a breakdown of, because I know with the PSAT, every student receives a breakdown of, well, how many questions they got wrong within each section, and then what were their strengths and what were their weaknesses, so that usually teachers use that, and, you know, like you were saying, with the Khan Academy, devise a study plan from there. Would that be happening with the SAT? And then lastly, do you know how many teachers currently use, like, the Khan Academy-based model, integrated into their classes?
That's a great question. That's one thing that I think that our board is talking about, how do we access the Khan Academy more pervasively in our One Lunch program, because I believe we have One Lunch opportunities. And that's, that's the plan. The plan is to take the PSAT results in October, and formulate a county-wide assessment plan, or at least preparation plan for the SAT via One Lunch, that's actually.
Because I had known that, I mean, a lot of students use it outside of school for preparation, but I wasn't sure if there was a system in place or in school.
We're going to do that this year, hopefully, yes.
Thank you.
Where it has a 10th grade, so just to clarify, the 11th grade is going to be taking the SAT, the 10th grade is going to be taking, is that going to be the PSAT?
Yes, yes, that's correct.
And 11th grade, okay. Is there any, let's say if a student does not want to take it, is there an opt-out, or is it?
Yeah, that's a really good question, too. So just to be clear, so PSAT will be administered to all 10th and 11th graders this year. PSAT will be only administered to 11th grade. I think your question is appropriate. You know, if students want to opt-out, are they able to do that? Certainly, they are able to opt-out. We don't want students just to bubble in and be mindless at their desk, but we certainly want to push everyone to sit for the test, to engage as much as possible. Now, the consequence of that, if they opt out of the SAT, then we would have to then administer the CCR test, which is the Accuplacer. So we have to, by law, we have to get a test on record for all of these students in 11th grade, and at that point, that we, they can opt out of the SAT, but then subsequently, we'd have to give them another college and career readiness test. If they don't qualify through, through an ulterior or alternate method or way, we would have to give, administer the Accuplacer.
Okay. And then, have you, do, have you thought about administering the ASVAB for students that are, like, thinking of a technical career?
That's a great question. That's something that I, as a math supervisor for the last five years, have asked the state. I said, why won't we ask, why won't we administer the ASVAB? And that is a college and career readiness test, in lieu of the SAT, in lieu of the Accuplacer. And they've all said that, in their words, the military's not a career, which is somewhat offensive to all of us down here in Southern Maryland. Do you feel like there are ASVAB preparation? I think that that is a very appropriate thought. I think that that is a very appropriate thought as well when we get into the One Lunch. Maybe students aren't geared towards SAT, but we could use the One Lunch as preparation for ASVAB. And I do believe, I think that's a viable option as well, and we will explore that this year.
Because I know that it does test reading, writing, math skills, science, you know, it is a variety of skills. I do know that some schools do use it as kind of a way to help a student determine maybe what they might want to do as a career.
Right, and some of my old students have actually called me and said, can you help me prepare for the ASVAB? I think it's a very challenging test. It's not an easy test by any stretch of the imagination. So I definitely think that that should be on our plate to explore this.
And from what I understand, I could be wrong, but I did not think there was a cost to administering that.
Don't believe so, but I need to, I don't know for sure, and I can check into that.
And then, okay, the, when the students take the SAT or SAT, is it going to be designated as one day that everybody takes it? And is it going to be the same date or same time that the other SATs are going on around the county?
That's another great question, I think. In light of this new one-day SAT, the college board has offered to come down, they're going to do a workshop for us on August 11th. Yes, PSAT will be administered on one day, all countywide, 10th and 11th graders. And it will be administered on one day, countywide, for all 11th graders in the month of March. And the two dates that we're exploring, March 7th and March 21st.
Okay, so it's not, I guess what I'm looking at is if, I don't know if that's a Saturday or what those days are, but.
No, they're during the regular instructional.
Okay, because I knew that students sign up, and they could be from outside the county or whatever, to sign up for the SATs, like, say, at Riken or at here, you know, and I didn't know if this is now going to be filled, so students can't sign up for a test day.
We'll still be running those Saturday SAT dates throughout the county, open to any child that might be interested. The purpose behind this and what makes this different is, this is, you don't, this is during the school day. So, I mean, one of the things that prevents children from going and taking the SAT is, first, you have to pay for it. Second, you have to do it on your own. Third, you have to find your way to a testing site on your own, no transportation is provided. So there's a lot of initiative that has to be undertaken by the child and with the support of parents to go and actually take the SAT. What we're doing with this is we're saying, we're, you know, it's, we'll take care of all the information, we'll register all the students, we'll fill out all the information, we'll get all the tests, and we'll administer during the regular instructional day. And one of the things that has kind of compelled this decision is, though, through the College and Career Readiness Act of 2013, they mandated that by the end of your 11th grade year, every single child has to demonstrate college and career readiness. And they give a whole host of different ways that you can do it, but the assessment portion that's recognized is SAT. And so, how can we best comply with the legislation and best serve our kids? And we believe that ultimately, the SAT is the most universally accepted key to, you know, enrollment and post-secondary. So we could give everybody the Accuplacer, and there'd be some value to the Accuplacer, and it costs a little less, but the SAT is really the standard. So that's why we've, that's why we're putting this proposal before you today.
The one day is not to replace those Saturday administrations.
No.
It's just, it's in addition to. So for the one-day admin, that's going to be relegated to our St. Mary's County Public School friends, families in the county, but those Saturday administrations could be people coming in from Charles County, Alver County.
Right, right. That's why I was, wasn't sure if it was, like, going to block everybody out.
And we still may, they'll still, so, Ms. Concaria, have you taken the SAT? Did you take it just once?
I took it, well, I took it handful, well, I took it once in middle school when it didn't count, just to see what was left.
Just to see.
And then once in ninth grade, then it was done.
Oh, wow, that's.
I wanted to get it out of the way early.
I mean, some people, I'm sure you did quite well. Some people take it multiple times, and then they take it to very specifically target either the math or the reading component of it and to super-score. So this doesn't preclude any of that. There'll still be all those different things going on. This is really just to break down and to provide it, to provide this to our kids.
Right. Like, not get all, in all the details. This is a very historic step, if I'm going to be so bold to use that broad historic word, right? Because I think we probably have, in fact, I know we probably have a lot of first-generation college students in our school system whose parents never went through this, don't know how to go through it, and the whole task is incredibly daunting, right? I mean, it's daunting.
Oh, it is.
If you have gone through it as a parent.
Even if you have, like, I have children or brothers who have gone through it, and it was still extremely confusing process, and just.
Right.
For a lot of students, like you had said, the fee, and then the fact that it's.
The transportation, and it's a Saturday.
It's a Saturday with the big thing.
So in order to couple this, then also with checking the box to drill it down, that now we have a standardized test that will get rid of part testing, or, you know, whatever, whatever that grade 11 test needed to be, it's kind of killing two birds with one stone.
And then it's actually, to me, a useful test that the students can use later.
Right, right. It's not just.
The greatest academic use.
Throw in a drawer because it's on their transcript, they can use it to build on something in their life later on, i.e. college or whatever.
To your point, the Park Algebra II test, we'd have to shut down schools for four days.
Right.
Do this. We're shutting down schools for three and a half hour block.
Right.
It's a much more useful time, with a much more useful.
How do we possibly do that? How can you possibly give everybody a test at the exact same time for a three? Oh, that's right, you don't do it online. You actually do a paper and pencil test. AP as well. We don't do it online. It's a designated time. Everybody in the entire state of Maryland takes the AP test at the same time.
Nation, yeah, that's right.
And, I'm sorry, yes, I never think beyond Maryland, but yes, the entire nation takes the test at the exact same time.
You're on Eastern Seaboard, right?
Yeah, so the whole, yeah, well, depending upon time zones.
Yeah, that's right.
So that really is, that's one of the best draws of this, is that, you know, we can shut it all down, everybody sits for the test at the same time. It also allows us to take those 11th grade students and really spend some time orienting them, getting them all ready, working with the teachers, working with the test administrators, and then all eyes on at the same time to administer the test.
Can I ask one more?
Please.
Okay. So students that have accommodations, okay, so you would have enough staff to be able to, or computers, like, say, if they're visually impaired or whatever, to have large writing or, I know you were talking about paper and pencil, but I think they take it on the computer.
That's part of why they have to come down on the 23rd to prepare us for that.
Okay.
Actually, accommodations will be fully met.
Okay, thank you.
I really don't have any questions. I have a couple comments, Mr. Jaffers. One, I was heartened to hear about the Khan Academy. I've come and following that since Mr. Khan started the academy, enormous resource at everybody's fingertips, so kudos to you in integrating that. I'm kind of reflecting back in my own experience, and I recall in England, I'm not saying now, but a number of years ago, they gave you a test when you're eight years old, I think, and your whole life depended on that one test. You either went into the trades or you went on to universities. So, fast forward now, well, even when I was, took an SAT, there was no preparation, there was no courses that you could take, no pre-testing. They just pulled you out of school halfway through your senior year, you went out, took the test, and that was it. So now, I'm very happy to see how a lot of the kids that may not necessarily test very well, using the example, English example, with this preparation, the PSAT, it seems to me that it's giving a lot of kids that may not test well, succeed and get into college. So I just wanted to compliment you on that.
Thank you. Just one comment to that is, Roma took the test before they had refigured.
Yeah.
The test now on SAT is much more, as I said, it's more, you know, classrooms, it's much more fair, there's no tricks, there's nothing, I mean, there's still going to be some test-taking strategies that you need to employ, but it's not going to be that you need to do all these tricks to be successful in SAT. So I totally agree.
I just have one question. Essay portion, do a lot of students take the essay portion? And then if, so then if you're administering it without the essay portion, is there an opportunity to take it later, or do you have to pay to take a full test again?
Yeah, a lot of.
Okay.
They call it the higher education. They'll always take the SAT optional, or their essay optional sometimes.
Okay.
So that would be something that, subsequently, we could explore that, see how this test run goes this year.
Right, adds to cost, adds to time, and it isn't, and it isn't required, so.
All those things, that's right.
All right, yeah, I had my comments before. I mean, I think, I think it's one for, I mean, Mr. Davis said the same thing, so I think it, I think it'll give, hopefully, more opportunities for students who might not have had them.
Thank you.
I think this is a great opportunity for our students to take the PSA, PSAT, which in turn prepare them for a better score on the SAT by identifying their strengths and areas of improvement. Also, it is an opportunity where we are giving all students the benefit of taking the test, regardless of their income or their ability to pay. And how many other counties are doing this program?
That's a good question. I think more counties around the state are considering. I don't know of one county in particular, talking to college board, I think there's other states that may be looking at, I think, popping in, but I think there's some states external to Maryland that are exploring this and have actually paid for this. No other LEA, I don't believe, is taking this.
I believe, I believe Anarundel, either Anarundel or Montgomery, one of the two of them does do this.
Well, we at the front of the line, so we're on the cutting edge of doing this, and this is.
This is definitely the first time for us.
Well, this is good. So we are moving forward in a positive way. So there are many benefits to the program to familiarize the student with the format of the test. It provides equity for students who would not have had the opportunity to take it because lack of funding. And I thank you for getting a discount because the students have taken, so you've been financially responsible. And it all, in the end, it benefits all our students with helping them to plan for their future. So thank you very much for your excellent presentation.
Did I understand you to say that by doing this, we will no longer have to give the Park Algebra II test? That's excellent. I love the fact that we're able to take, take hours of testing off of students by providing them with something else that's, that is probably, as you stated, much more useful going forward than simply taking the Park Algebra II test. I applaud you for finding a way to make this happen. I think we are at the forefront of this, and I think it will be very effective. And just one last point to your comment about ASVAB and what some of the folks, I don't know who at MSDE said the military is not a career, but they certainly don't understand. And I hope you'll continue to press that point. And I would think that there would be some folks on the base would love to write letters of support to perhaps help MSDE understand that the depth and breadth of career opportunities that are available for both enlisted as well as officers in the military, to say that ASVAB and the military is not a career is really far off the mark. Other than that, thanks very much for bringing this forward, and I think I'll be having a conversation with Dr. Salmon.
And again, this was the previous administration. It was a few years ago. I brought that up to everyone's attention.
Please don't dime out Mr. Jaffers.
No, 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 not at all. But I know that Dr. Salmon is very supportive of CTE education.
Oh, absolutely, right.
And a variety of paths moving forward. And so I think for, to have this conversation with her might, might deliver a different result.
I would just like to thank the board. When you approved the budget for this year, we had built this money into the budget. We've been planning on this since last year, and so now this is just the moving forward with actually allocating the money. And I think it, I really do, I think that it's a, I think it's a really sound plan for how best to meet the intent of the legislation of the College and Career Readiness Act of 2013. I think this really is the intent. We want to make sure that we are as thoroughly preparing kids as we can for whatever may be their post-secondary school experience.
Okay. Does anyone have anything else? All right, you?
Well, I echo what Mrs. Weaver, Mrs. Allen said. We're both military families, and I have talked with students who have taken ASVAB tests, and they found out that that test was not easy. It is not easy at all. The military is becoming even more selective. The higher score you get, the more opportunities you have, and the lower scores, you may have to wait. You may get in, but I have known students who have had to wait a year or more to go in the military. So the higher score you get, the faster you can get in, and the more opportunities that you have. So that is important, that they start studying in addition to taking the SAT, the PSAT, to study for that test. And I'm sure in many career centers, they already have programs that students can tap in already to start practicing. So that is a good career opportunity for our students. They can go in at a young age, retire after 20 years, and start another career and retire a second time.
To get back on the last thing that you'd said, I mean, I think when students take more opportunities to sit in these sort of pressure-packed situations, and Roma can attest to this, the more that you get acclimated to sitting for tests, the more optimal your performance is. So if we do this in October, and we do this again in March, I mean, it's, if we take the ASVAB, the more opportunities that we give students to sit in front of pressure-packed assessments, the more opportunity they have to be more successful. So, and they just granted more opportunity subsequently.
I do have one other question. It begs the question, if, in order to move forward and to graduate, you have to attain a certain score on, on these tests. So has there been a cut score established for a baseline minimum that students will have to pass each section of the SAT?
500 on the math and 500 verbal. So that's, I'd for the CCR to be checking the box, this proverbial box from MSDE for CCR, 500 on math, 500 verbal. That's right.
And if they don't hit those scores, then what?
Alternate pathways to help bridge the gap. It gives us a full year to plan out their 12th grade sequences of courses that they can use and sign up for.
Very good. Thank you.
Another question, go ahead. I'm sorry. When, after students take the SAT, this SAT, will they be able to, since this is their school, will they still be able to, I know some students do this, purchase, for like a $10 or $15 fee, purchase the actual booklet with the questions and answers? Because I know a lot of students do that for preparation for either PSAT or future SATs.
Yeah, you're asking a very good question from them. That's what we hope to, to see when college board comes down, those are questions that are on our, and I'd love to have any more questions from you all if you want to submit them. But that's a really good question that we have on our Q and A with them.
Thank you.
Oh, that's good. Mr. Jaffers is happy he has a chair, I'll tell you that.
I like the setup, I'd say. I like the setup. I could stay up all day talking about this.
He starts leaning back. Okay, can I have a motion for this action item, please?
I move that the board approve contract, college board's College Readiness and Success Contract, number CB 000019898, in the amount of $73,616.
We have a second?
Second.
All of us in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Thank you. Thank you. Move right into the Apex room.
Sure, yeah.
You're back on there. See, the chair is very beneficial, isn't it?
Okay, um, so. Opportunity for students is we'd like to provide Apex online. Secondary special issue. Digital curriculum designed to actively engage students by combining embedded supports to meet diverse student needs. Following what we call effective curriculum, which is designed to support all students in achieving their potential. Struggling with grade level content to those capable of accelerating their learning. Second bullet would be actionable data. Students know at any time and any point where they stand in terms of progress, including the instructors that teach the courses. Teachers have real-time data at their fingertips to also inform instruction. Administrators can easily see the results of the other programs such as Apex. Last bullet is the success management to ensure that S and P results are expected when implementing the digital curriculum. We, we can see this in real time. Students actually using this in multiple ways, whether it's accelerating or remediating. Test is our focal point of the entire program. Features of Apex are as follows. We engage students in rigorous coursework and prepare students for college and work as well. Digital content and tutorials for grades through 12. And this is something new this year. Last year, it was just relegated to ninth through 12th. So this year, we want to reel out, push this back into middle school to sixth through eighth so that there can be some supplemental units that teachers have access to and they can assign as well to those kids in sixth, seventh, and eighth grade. Actually have built curricula for third through fifth grade as well, which is great for those students that maybe were in grade, that didn't get the, haven't assimilated grade level performance or competency. And we can, you know, as solid at fingertips, we can assign those tutorials accordingly based on needs of students. This is about math, science, and social studies, all language electives, as well as advanced placement coursework. Provide customization, at least Apex does, of the content to all high school classrooms. This is for original credit, credit recovery, quarter recovery, unit recovery, and also blended learning integration. The end result is that students are in charge of their learning. Students can relearn and recover learning or accelerate their learning as needs. Feature of Apex and overseeing a lot of students in the program, it really, you have to be a certain type of student to want to accelerate. Like Roma, she's a certain type of student, and she's able to. Responsible enough to do that. Others, students need more guidance and handholding. And I think we have those supports in place at the site to be able to remediate. And so I think it's, it really is, it's differentiated to the nth degree. As well as the type of composition based on your makeup. More responsible, you can handle more of this. Or less responsible, you'll probably need a little bit more. Pushing this on to sixth grade through eighth grade. Every student will have their own individual login, so it's all catered to, to their own ability. Global discussion, every student has their own login, and it's determined their learning now and their learning competency.
Speaking from experience, like working with Mr. Jaffers when I was trying to work with an Apex course, it is fairly geared towards the actual curriculum that you learn in school, especially with the AP classes. It's very aligned with the college board's curriculum. And at the same time, there is a wide variety of classes you can take and different levels. So from honors just to standard to AP. And there's always that support in high school, especially now with the one lunch. There's always that Apex class for students to take, not for students to take during lunch, but for students to come into the computer lab and take it. And for students who want to accelerate their learning and for students who need to recover. And, but what, one of my questions was that, I know we've had a long history with Apex. I was just wondering if there were any other digital curriculum models that our county has explored? There's nothing wrong with Apex, I'm just wondering if.
There's, there's one or two other ones that are viable. I haven't done the. Are some competitors out there that would probably, I think, will take some time this year to exploit and unpack.
But the state of, so the Maryland State Department of Education recognizes Apex and has certified the Apex courses specifically for origi, there's a whole raft of Apex courses for original credit that you can take and is recognized by the Maryland State Department of Education. That's one of the reasons why we, why we.
That's, that's the biggest reason. I mean, they're endorsed by, and some of them. That's, that's exactly the, that's the sort of deciding factor, if you will.
When you were saying in middle school for the, for sixth grade, you were saying how they would potentially, the teacher would use units from Apex? So would the students be taking the actual course or, like, not the full course, correct?
That's correct. They wouldn't take the full course. So for instance, if you're struggling, we can itemize it and drill down to the standard or to the domain of a common core, whether. This particular student, so they can get some remediation.
And that, that falls under the category of tutorials.
Of course, that's right.
So it, so it opens up the whole, the whole catalog of tutorials for middle school teachers to be able to push into their classes.
It's, a lot, a lot of people don't realize this for, for Apex, is that they have Accuplacer tutorial, they have SEP tutorial, they have ACT tutorial. So once, once the student gets a login, they can go anywhere that they want to. But they get assigned by their. Huge opportunity for our guys.
For electives or classes for original credit are, is this offered at the beginning of the year, the school year, so that students can say, oh, you know, I would really like to take, let's say, Arab or Latin or something that's not normally offered? Are they given that opportunity at that time or?
A lot of that is, they have to probably work with their counselor to see what are the opportu, what, what types of courses are endorsed by MSDs so that they could have 100% experience online? I would suggest that they work with their counselor in particular to see what Apex courses are offered as original credit.
When you go to your counselor in, you know, like, May to set your schedule, if you want to take an Apex course, you just ask your counselor, and they have a, you know, binder full of all the courses. And if you get original credit on, and if Apex doesn't provide it, there are one or two other providers, like you were saying, that offer it that you can take. So the counselor's very helpful in that thing.
It's talked about, it's dictated by the Maryland Virtual Learning Opportunity.
MVLO. MSD's MVLO decides whether Apex.
Val Emmerich.
Yes.
And I hope you got this memo. I wanted to find out how many high schools, a high school student uses as a supplement, middle schoolers usually supplement on tutorials. How many students that have started high school and middle school broken down as a original credit have completed it? How many have not, have pulled out? And also with middle schoolers, if any of them are using it for original credit, how many have completed it?
Yeah, and I, I added a couple. We got the request last night, so Paul Fanseller had been working on this.
I got it at nine o'clock last night?
Yeah, he worked it up. And this is what, it's at the end, end of this slide, and I can share this with you.
Right.
Uploaded here, and I think these are the. We don't have, we didn't, we put a little bit of, of the, we didn't put a lot of the middle school folks on here, because most of their Apex experiences, when they move from eighth grade to ninth grade, oftentimes that's their experience.
So that's considered high school then?
That's right.
Okay.
I, I can definitely share this out. And we have, the way we've collated this may, I believe it adheres to what, what the question, which query was as far as the courses. Access to the remediation. That's really, you know, when we say, you know, a lot of students access Apex probably for remediation as opposed to the. Option, you know, when we talk about credit recovery, quarter recovery, those options, you could see they're more luminous than, let's say, the original credit option.
Okay. And how long do they have? It's, okay, so for original credit, how long do they have to complete that? Is there like a timeframe? Can they, like, they haven't completed it yet, but they could still complete it this year or is it?
That's a really good question, and I think we, our policy's been, at least the way we've been, our protocol's been 365 calendar days. So they have 365 calendar days.
Okay.
Not a 10-month, it's a 12-month.
Okay, 'cause so some of these people that, students that have not completed the course might be just finishing up.
Right, they're still, they're still enrolled. We don't clo, we don't close them out of their progress. The thing is, we're, we're bound by student record, so we have to have everything completed by the end of the school year so that then they can go through and do the tabulation. But we don't, we don't close out a student's account. So that's why you see, so when you see that there are 253 kids enrolled for original credit and 111 have completed, that doesn't mean that we shut out 142 of them and they're gone. That means they're, they're still, they're still enrolled and, and moving through it.
I presently have nine students that are still on my rolls.
Yep.
Working vigorously, and they have till August 30 to finish the course.
And does someone follow up with them to, or is that you?
It's our office, yeah. We need, admittedly, we need to do a better job with that. So we're gonna probably send certification out. Working on that internal sort of oversight and auditing to making sure that we do have. We are sending the documentation to schools, to families, and we have record here essentially.
Now, do you still have to have someone unlock the next area of the course or whatever? I know that my one son, because both of them have done the Apex. But sometimes they had difficulty getting a hold of the person to continue on. And it was a little frustrating because like they wanted to do it then, and they couldn't get a hold of the person that would unlock.
I've gotten a couple emails like that, that people are frustrated with me because I haven't been real-time, 24/7 accessible. And I apologize, but sometimes, you know. And I do, I feel, and I understand that. So I try to be as responsive as a teacher in the Apex program as possible. And we are, and I do feel like that is a concern that we're trying to. Responsive, I, I think that's something that we can do a better job at, yeah, me included.
A lot of teachers have been starting this date, unlock mastery-based learning. That means you just, you, instead of, after you complete assignment, you have to complete it for the next one to show up. They just, you know, unlock all of the assignments so that no matter what, a student can access. So some teachers, it's a.
Depends on the application, and it will be different from teacher to teacher. And it is, it's a, I mean, honestly, it's an instructional resource, especially at the middle school level, it's going to be, you know, when you're speaking of, like, if they're going through for original credit, there are, there are breaks where we have to verify that they've indeed done the work and they have to do the, they have to do the assessment to the satisfaction of the person overseeing the course, who's really the signatory on the value of the credit.
That's a really good point, because we have to audit, we have to make sure what we're teaching in granny credit, let's just say locally, is sort of marrying up with what Apex is offering virtually. So they would come in and do an audit-only assessment, a final exam or midterm, as Scott referenced, just to make sure that they, our curriculum is marrying up with their virtual curriculum. So we have to also do those internal audits as well.
Okay. All right, thank you.
I just have one little question. You're talking about actionable data, and it's clear that teachers have the real-time data at their fingertips and that administrators can easily see the results of the program. My question is about the students. I think you said that at any point in time, they know where they're at. Is there quantitative data? How do they measure where they're at?
Roma?
Sure. So on the, on the front page of Apex, you will see your grade-to-date and grade-to-work. So grade-to-date will be the assignments that you, quizzes and things like that, what you personally had submitted. Grade-to-work will tell you, if you hadn't turned in an assignment, it will count as a zero. So they will see how behind they're getting until the grade-to-work matches the grade-to-date. And then it's, it's actually very clear. There's a calendar and then there's a list of overdue activities. So students are very clear in where they stand. And usually you get automatic weekly progress reports, and it goes to you or your parent. You, you get a heads up on what your grade is and if you're falling behind or not. So it's very, very clear for students.
Very good, thank you.
Roma needs to stay on the board forever.
Just, and if, students, just, just because they take the assessment, there has to be a certain threshold that they have to meet, otherwise they get backed into the tutorial, have to go through the tutorial, and then they administer the assessment. So it's actually really, it's very sound, sort of, process.
I mean, I, I think it's a great tool, because I think it's, it serves a variety of purposes, and it's not just for accelerated students, it's also for students who need additional help and tutorials, especially in those middle school years, you know, when things start moving a lot faster, you know, in sixth and seventh grade. And then, you know, you want to, you want to make sure that the student gets their study and classroom habits set then for, you know, in order to succeed in high school.
It's not an answer, it's not a substitution through instruction.
Right, absolutely not.
It's a supplement, so yes, I agree.
Our students are digital learners, and they learn in different ways, many different ways, and one size does not necessarily fit all. This is pure individualized learning, where students work at their own pace and their own level. And they take responsibility for their learning, which prepares them for college and career readiness. And I appreciate the added opportunity to meet the unmet, required, and exploratory needs of our students. Thank you for bringing forth this opportunity for the middle school students so that they will be included in the program for remediation, original credit, credit recovery, and exploration. Thank you, Mr. Jaffers, for bringing this forward, the areas of expansion and the areas of improvement.
Need to capture that. That's, that's, that's it? I don't have to say anything else?
Thank you.
For the middle school students, I know in the high school, we have a computer, we have a couple of computer labs, we have teacher facilitators there within that. How will this be offered at the middle school?
That's, that's another good question. Some availability of, of arts on wheels or cows, as we affectionately call them. It's also, it's web browser-based, so if students do have access at home, they can access those programs at home. I do feel like this is something we're going to have to explore. Process like, like, like every other, we have to sign up the computers on wheels. Talk about, we could be working on this skill on the computer, five computers, and people could be working with. And middle school teams could share the, the access. It doesn't have to be 30 computers deployed to one, to one room. It could be five computers deployed to five different rooms or six. Do have to work on the, the finite resources available, but again, I think it's, it's no different than what teachers have to do now as far as accessing the technology.
I'm pleased that we're moving forward with this for a number of reasons. There was some legislation a few years ago that, where the push was that every student would have to take an online course before they could, as a graduation requirement. And that was changed so that instead there was a committee that was, was tasked at the state level to take a look at that. And, and I was part of that, and one of the things that we came up with is that blended learning seemed to make a lot more sense than to just have a straight-out online class. There's a lot of conversation about that. We brought students in who spoke to us about their experience with taking just an online class. class and the challenges that that presented. And a number of the courses that, that were available in the past, a lot of the providers, the Maryland, Florida Virtual School was one of the providers, and many of their courses have now been disallowed because of issues with that. So it's an ongoing conversation as to whether or not the class, the online learning provides the level of rigor that MSDE expects to, to match the college and career curriculum. And so I'm pleased that we're able to offer this resource, because the concern expressed was that as you move on in life, you will be likely to take an online course at some point, and doing it early on in, in secondary at least allows you to experience it, see how it works for you, and what you need to do to be successful in the future. So I, I've taken the time to go in to the labs and really talk to students here about Apex, whether or not it's something that they, that they like, that is useful for them, and that does provide the rigor, and I'm convinced through those conversations and my observations that it very much is, so.
You're right, the power is the blended aspect of the program. Actually articulated and matriculated to CSM this summer, actually, they're giving this blended opportunity, and our kids are way ahead from St. Mary's County because they've had the experience of being online, so they, it's, it's a natural segue into their experience at the community college in CSM. As you talked with the new president, this is a huge opportunity, whether they're doing, you know, remediation up, up at the college, or they're actually getting in, you know, original credit, and they have these hybrid courses, and our students are very much well-prepared to anticipate and be successful in them. So it's, it does give them a platform forward.
And I was, I, I know a few years ago, we talked about the fact that you were surprised to see that during our winter break, that the spike in students using Apex, where everybody thought there would be a decline, and they saw just the opposite. So clearly, it is something that students are utilizing. Thanks very much.
May I have a motion for this action item?
I move that the board approve the purchase of Apex Learning Digital Curriculum and Services in the amount of $200,908.
Do you have a second?
I second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Post, motion carry. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Jaffers. I think that was, we heard a lot from you today.
You didn't want to get a foul that comfortable.
All right. Dr. Roper.
Morning.
Good morning.
Very appropriate on the first day of tryouts. First ball sport.
Just to echo Mr. Davis's comment earlier on, I...
I wonder if you were gonna reference?
I had to, didn't I? I took what was then called the 11-plus, which actually instituted 13-plus to allow people two years later to maybe get back on track. Again, good morning, I'm behalf of both of us. Very appropriate that we're coming to you this morning with regards to athletic trainers. This is the day of workouts at our high schools. Just as a little introduction before we go through the short PowerPoint, our trainers provide preventative services, emergency care, clinical diagnosis, therapy, and the rehabilitation of injuries and medical conditions. Obviously, the safety of our students is a primary concern, and by having athletic trainers present a lot of the time, that takes the burden off our coaches. All our coaches are required to complete a care and prevention of athletic injuries course during the first year of their employment, but it's certainly obviously not at the level of a certified athletic trainer. Outlined some of the requirements in the bid. In times when heat acclimatization, concussion, and cardiac arrest are real concerns, it is so important to have. If I go through the first couple of slides and then pass over to you. Obviously, these are certified individuals that hold national certification, and this contract allows for a total of approximately 500 hours at the high school. Ida, to determine when those trainers will be based, practices, contests, championships, et cetera. Current contract was awarded in 2012, so we were satisfied with that group and renewed over a number of years. That group was the Rehabilitation Center of Southern Maryland. Add to the current contract that we're bringing forward today, hourly rate for trainers was $30. Pass this over to Ricky to speak to the actual.
The procurement method that we use for this solicitation was the invitation to bid, outlined in the board policy, DJC. 19 vendors were registered for the commodity code Athletic Trainers in the email marketing platform that we use to advertise and solicit. They were notified of this opportunity, and they could have participated. In addition, I noted physical therapy. When I opened bids on the 26th of July, I only had one bid, and that was from the, the new contract will begin on September 1st. Same vendor who has been providing the service for more than five years, I believe they had the contract previous. Their hourly rate has gone up $2 per hour. It had remained $30 the entire five years previous, even though they had opportunities to renegotiate at each annual renewal. The total contract is not expected to exceed $1,000. Recommend that the board have a motion to put this agenda in.
Do we have any questions?
I have to ask you, was there only, was there a reason that only one bid was received?
Well, there, it's kind of a specialty service, and over the past five years, there was one company, they were affiliated with MedStar Health, who reached out to me to say, "Next time you put this out, can you let me know?" And they had two different contact emails, and I tried both of them, and I got any other person or contact to reach out to, but it was posted in a public area in our bid board. First, I'd like to say, I am very grateful that you have athletic trainers, because really, being a young person, and if you have some injury, even if it's slight, it could be a lifelong injury if it's not done correctly. So I think it is very, very important that we have these athletic trainers there. Since the tryouts are today, and I'm assuming, I could be wrong, that some of the students have already been out there practicing or not, whatever, but, you know, no. Okay, I don't, sorry, I don't know how this works, but...
They may have been engaged in some preseason conditioning, but practice.
Okay. Okay, sorry, I just, but is there, is there someone, since the tryouts are today, this contract, if it is passed, is not starting till September? If they are forming a team like, say, football or soccer, having to get ready, is there some, someone out there now? The current contract that we have is valid through the end of the month, so there's no lapse in service. Okay. And the other thing is, let's say if you have one athletic trainer, let's say for Chopticon, will that person divide their time between football, soccer, field hockey, or do they have more than one, you know, maybe doing a few hours a week with field hockey, and this one's doing football, or?
Yeah, I mean, there are, there are a limited number of trainers available. It's at the discretion of the athletic directors to get the trainer to the various...
The company has 11 athletic trainers, one staff.
As I say, it's a site-based decision, you know, what events they cover that day. Obviously, if there's a field hockey game, they would be...
Okay.
Hockey game the following night, we hope they would spread the coverage as evenly as possible.
All right, thank you.
The $32 per hour, I assume that's, is that fully loaded? Is that your cost? In other words, it has the salaries, it has the company overhead, so that's, that's your total cost, okay. Could you explain a little bit about the credentials of, of a trainer? You're saying they have Maryland license, sure, but I was curious, what kind of credentials a typical trainer would have?
It's essentially a degree, a degree in athletic training. Places like Frostburg University offer such courses, extensive program, four-year degree program. Part of athletic training, I understand, is annually, they have to renew their certification by attending various workshops and clinics, so it's not like they won't time.
So each of your trainers would have at least a bachelor's degree, is that correct?
They work under the guidance of a local physician. Lucas Wymore, who works just out there.
Thank you, Asolay.
I don't have any questions, thank you.
Okay. Standards are being raised for everyone, for our students, academic standards, and for our professional staff. Standards are being raised. Safety is a top priority for our school system, and we must continue, and with all the media attention focused on sports injuries, it is encumbered upon us to make sure we have certified and licensed trainers and physical therapists who have ongoing training. So this is for the safety of our students and staff, to make sure everyone is safe and having a good time, and things are done appropriately. Thank you very much for bringing this forward.
I've seen the athletic trainers in action. I very much support their being there and providing the service for students. It does allow students to have someone on site who can diagnose an issue and, and prescribe, if you will, a certain treatment or rest as appropriate, and, and if things are not addressed, it can easily be exacerbated by continuing to, to work out, and so I'm, I'm really pleased that there's somebody with a strong background who is able to guide the students to where, to function appropriately. So I'm very much in support of this. I wish, wish we were able to do more, because, you know, we've got, we've got students in, on a variety of different fields, all at the same time, and things can happen very quickly. But I know that with the number of adults that are out, eyes are on, and, and the students are pretty well attuned to the fact that there's a trainer around, and I've heard students say, "We need to get the trainer, you know, from a different field and bring them over." So I think that, that situational awareness is also very, very helpful and very appropriate. Thanks for bringing this.
Do I have a motion for this recommended action item?
I move that the Board of Education of St. Mary's County approves the contract award of ITB number SMCPS 2018 CICAT to pro-flex physical therapy to provide certified athletic trainers and/or Maryland State licensed and nationally board-certified physical therapists on an as-needed basis throughout the duration of this contract, which can be renewed through August 31, 2022, with the estimated annual cost at $48,000.
I have a second.
One second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Post, motion carry. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Mr. Thompson?
Good morning. Hopefully, you all have seen some of the pictures we've sent out, so the buses are out and rolling. We have our new buses being checked in, bus cameras being installed. We have a lot of other things going on. The charter school started today, and they have a new transportation plan this year, so hopefully, that's gone well this morning. I haven't heard too many items with that, so, but it's a new plan, new items that are going forward with it. And today, I bring forward the bus contracts for approval for this school year, so we have a few things to discuss with those. This year, we're running with 42 bus contractors. We, they will provide 163 regular route buses, 27 special needs route buses, and 65 spare buses. They'll be used for field trips and spares as needed. The bus contracts to be approved, we have 21 buses that are, reached the end of their 12 years, and they need replacement for this year. 10 six-year contracts, they've reached the end of their six years, and they'll be renewed for another six years, which will then reach their 12 years. We have one new special needs bus contract that was approved in the budget, and that's been issued to Mr. Doug Somerville, and we have 65 spare bus agreements to go out, and then one contract was transferred between Ms. Marjorie Ridgell to Kessler Bus Service. The formula changes for payments this year. What's being proposed to the per-vehicle allotment, the PVA, it includes air conditioning this year as part of the bus specifications. We also are using the prime rate for calculation, which was a recommendation for many years by the legislative auditors. The amounts don't change, just the way the formula's calculated this year. So in several of the reviews that they've done recently, they've recommended the prime rate plus an ROI to calculate the PVA, so that's what we're going for, and it's actually the same amount we've been paying. Basically, it's just we've been using a local interest rate from banks and officers to generate that, but now we're using the prime rate plus an ROI to generate it. Our hourly payments, that's included in the budget, was to be increased by 3% to the contractors. The maintenance rate, we put an increase in for 5 cents per mile, which is primarily was a result of the added air conditioning item, because air conditioning isn't an extra maintenance expense, and also for the emissions items, the emissions controls on diesel engines and on vehicles in general have gone up significantly over the last 10 years, and it's a expensive item that we're seeing a lot of repairs and items across the state with, that, you know, it's caught, it's very costly, very costly and time-consuming trying to get those fixed. Fuel rate, the federal excise tax has been a recommendation for several years to be reduced from the payments to the contractors. The federal excise tax has been something that school bus contractors and school systems have been able to claim since the 1970s, and so they've claimed it for many years, and we've never taken it out of the calculation for the fuel rate. We are going to do that this year to take that calculation out. Most, I would say about half the counties have already gone forward with this just recently. And that's, you know, approximately 24 cents per gallon for diesel fuel is what the federal excise tax is. So the recommended action is that the Board of Education approves the bus contracts as outlined on the list provided by staff. Do you have any questions?
I don't have any, thank you. Mr. Thompson, 65 buses are for spare buses?
Yes, sir.
Are we paying the same rate per, per bus that, that's in, in, in regular routes?
No, we don't pay the regular, the same rate. So once they reach the end of their 12, we no longer pay PVA. There are a couple of the spare buses that get a small stipend, a spare bus stipend, but other than that, they, they don't get any other funds. They're just approved to be allowed to be used within our system. And then once they reach 15 years, that's the end of their allowable lifecycle for public school buses.
I see. So is there a way I can quantify what the, the cost for these spare buses as opposed to the regular route buses?
Well, we can, we can provide you with that cost.
I'd like that, because the thing that jumped out at me right away was, we've got a lot of buses that we're not using. Is that, is that a fair comment?
So if we have, if you have a bus on a regular route, like my son's bus breaks down through that contractor, that contractor has a spare bus in their inventory, so to speak, that they can swap out until that bus is repaired.
I understand that, but my, my concern is, I have a spare tire in my car.
Oh, are you?
And, and it's nice to have it, but I haven't used it in years. In fact, I got one car that has never, it's never been out of the car. And I, there's some costs there. There's some incremental cost for spare buses. I understand the reasons for them. I just wanted, I'd like to know what we're spending.
You want to know what the cost is that we are paying the contractors to keep the spare buses in service?
Exactly.
Right, so they're available whenever we need them. And we might not use a spare bus through the course.
Right, there's.
But yet, we're still paying for it.
There's a few of them that have.
Hypothetically, I'm saying, do we need 65? Maybe we can get by with 30. And if we can get by with 30, we're spending less money, is what I'm saying.
Correct.
I don't know if that's.
Now, we have, out of the 65, only a portion of them, they, they are paid spares, so they get a small stipend, which mainly helps them with replacing tires and other items. They're used for spares, they're used for field trips, they're used for a number of items, and I hate, you know, you'd like to believe that our buses don't break down, but the emissions items and the diesel items, there's a lot of breakdowns that are occurring out there every day with us, so they are used for that. But then you have a number of the buses that we don't pay really anything to. And it's really the contractor, just, they keep them just so when they get into an emergency that they need the bus, they have a bus there, because otherwise there's no bus to service it. So they keep it for, typically the bus will run for 12 years on a route, and then it can go three more years up into 15. And once it's 15, they have to take it off the road. It can go to a private school, it can go to other services, but it can't operate for the public school system. But I can generate, I can send it out.
Yeah, and, and I understand the need, that's not the issue. I just, there's a sunk cost. And the contrast, contractors absorbing that, absorbing that cost, and they're passing it on to the school system. So I'd just love to see.
I don't, I don't think they're passing it on to the school system.
They're just giving it to free? They're not?
We, no, we set the formula, that's one of the attachments that is in here, is, gives you the, the contract for spare buses. So there's, the only time it's being compensated, with the exception of these few, is.
When they're used?
When it's used.
Okay.
So they are, you know, think of your friends that have several spare cars in their yards that if this one breaks down, they can go use that one.
Okay.
So it's, it is on the, the bus contractor to utilize their overhead to maintain the insurance on that. It's not coming through the school system.
Okay, well, to, to use your analogy, it's a good analogy, there is a cost, and that is you've got to keep that spare car licensed, and that's, you've got to put tags on it, you've got to have insurance. There is some cost. If, if I could, somehow you could quantify that, I'd appreciate that.
I'll provide you the cost that the school system pays, but much of the cost is absorbed by the contractor. They don't bill us for it. It's, they, they have to maintain.
But my, my point is, by saying it's a sunk cost, somebody, the contractors is not providing that spare bus, and they're absorbing that cost, that somehow is integrated into their contract. That's all I'm saying.
Well, typically what happens is, they, if they don't have a spare bus, then they'll have to go get a spare bus from somebody else. And typically, the, another contractor may charge them to use their spare bus, so it's a cost avoidance for them.
I see.
And it's for servicing, because they're, if they don't service the route, then they put their contract in jeopardy of servicing the route. So they want to make sure their route's getting serviced and students are getting to school. So some of them, they do, there is nothing, they're, they're keeping it just for protection for themselves, but they are absorbing the cost for it.
Thank you.
But just to be clear, for the report back to the board, we would be able to identify by contractor the specific stipend and amount we may be providing for them for a spare bus, and we'll, and we'll be able to generate that back to the board as a communication.
Because I think what your concern is, is in the per-vehicle allotment that we're paying, you are assuming that the cost of doing business as a bus contractor to carry a spare bus is included in that.
And also, do we need 65 buses?
Well, and I think what Mr. Thompson is saying, it's not included in that, in that PVA at all.
Correct.
Right, so the PVA is calculated and negotiated with the bus contractors per year, or whatever the term is. And that's what they're getting just for the regular route buses that they're running and that they have contracts for. So then, if I'm Kessler Bus Service, right, I, if I have, I don't know, let's say I have 20 routes, I should have so many spare buses for my business to make sure that if something breaks down, and then there's a separate allotment that's given to them for that. So it's not really built into the regular route buses, the cost of the regular route buses.
Thank you. One last question.
Yes, sir.
The school systems own some of their own, our own buses, is that right?
That's correct.
How many of those?
We have 21 buses currently.
21 buses. This obviously is not in the equation at all. Okay. Is there, do you have any data at all on the cost of our own buses versus what we're contracting out at? Is there any?
We, we do have some data that we can provide. I know we've provided something a couple of years ago with some items that occurred.
Thank you, Mr. Thompson.
I don't have anything, thank you.
Thank you very much for everything you are doing. I've seen the photographs posted, what you're doing to get the buses ready for the opening of school. It is a big job. The buses are not sitting idly, they're being inspected. Thank you for keeping our students, our community, and our bus drivers safe on the road. Thank you.
Thank you.
The, deducting the federal fuel excise tax, I know that that has been a concern for contractors in the documentation that they have to provide in order to have the federal government refund that to them. So how is that being handled?
Well, it's, it's just an expectation. Most of them are already submitting for it, and we're, we're just deducting it, and it's on the contractors to apply for the credits to get that returned to them. Many of the concerns from the contractors are that they often will get audited by the IRS for it. And so they're concerned about, and that delays their crediting back from, for the federal excise tax. So there is some concerns with it for that purpose, and, I mean, it's, the expectation's really on them. I mean, we're setting the fuel rate with that deduction in there, and it's on their responsibility to go and claim that with them.
Okay. That's all.
I mean, Mr. Thompson's right, it's been on our legislative audit for a number of years, so.
I know, and there was legislation.
I'd be happy to just take it off.
Yeah, there was, there was legislation about it a couple of years ago, so I just know that it has been, it, it's been something that we've heard about, it's a bone of contention, and that the lag time in having that money refunded to them can be, can make things difficult for them, from a cash flow perspective.
And that in the per-vehicle allotment with our, our interest rate, the way we used it, and their lack of ability to evaluate that for us was my two points of frustration.
Any frustration?
But this addresses both, so we're.
That's right, so we're good now.
Cross an item off.
I don't have to argue with anyone next time, right? Okay, so with that, may I have a motion for this recommended action item?
I move that the Board of Education approve the bus contracts as detailed on the list provided by staff.
I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Thank you.
Very much.
Mrs. Fowler, move along.
Thank you, Mr. Smith. Good morning, Mrs. Bailey, Mrs. Washington, board members, and Mr. Smith. Long and I are here to talk with you today about our professional services contracts. Our good news is that we're hiring a number of people. You're familiar with the fact that for special education, and I'm starting with special education and services, we do have a number of private contractors with whom we contract on a regular basis. As you can see, five of them are speech and language pathologists, one is a physical therapist, and one is an orientation and mobility specialist. You're also familiar with the fact that we have a number of funding streams that we use for special education, including local funding, medical assistance, pass-through, parentally placed pass-through, and then the charter school contracts. So these are our private contracts. We also contract with a number of agencies, and we actually contract with more agencies this year than we have in the past. The good news is that we have been able to find agencies who can provide us with providers, although we would prefer, of course, to have all of these folks on our own books and as full-time equivalent employees. That, however, just isn't possible. You know, we continue to look for our own employees on a regular basis. However, as you know, we are mandated to provide services and students IEPs, and so we have to find the available service providers. So we, we are contracting with a number of different agencies. And you can see that one, speech and language pathologist, the amount of $44,900 comes under the parentally placed, if I go back to that slide, you see PP pass, the parentally placed pass-through. Question came up last year. These are families who have made the decision to put their children into private or parochial schools. Most students in that situation receive a service plan from St. Mary's County Public Schools. But we do provide direct services for students who, criteria for speech and or language impairment, services are provided at the home school of the student, and this money goes toward for those services. It is, it's coded under one person, but the service itself is spread out among all of Also, as you know, we have a contractor with Abacus, and we use that to bring on board approximately 35 enhanced adult support providers. That name has changed, you're probably familiar with ABA, Applied Behavior. There are new standards for board certified behavior analysts and the, because of that, and, and their supervision for ABA providers, because of that, we have now changed the name to Enhanced Adult Providers. They will still be doing the same kinds of duties as they have been, but we just needed to make that name change. We also have two hourly workers in the special education office through which we contract with Abacus, and then six pairs who are not ESPs, they are special education pairs that we, based on need. So for special education, you can see our totals for the local contracted therapist, medical assistance, pass-through, and just a total of $2,279,512.
On behalf, good morning.
Good morning.
On behalf of student services, as Susie said, we certainly like to fill a full-time position on our staff. At this point, we're looking at a contracted school psychologist through Comerlin Therapy Services, total contract amount of $97,124. Recommended action, that the Board of Education approve this agenda item as presented.
On the school psychologist, I know that we had approved for another school psychologist. Is this the one, because we couldn't find one?
We are, this is, we can't, we cannot find school psychologists. We currently have two vacancies, and we may end up having three, or we, yeah, we have another psychologist who's moving away. This is, this is to get a psychologist in at the beginning of the school year. We've been really challenged with finding people who, because you can, they can make more money, obviously, working through an LLC.
I know I've brought this up in the past, but not to you, is doing, through a nurse-practitioner who specializes in psychology, because I know that for nursing, you can go into that field. So I'm not sure if nurse practitioners can get certified in school psychology, but you do for the hospital. So I didn't know if that's a route that we could go, and I know that, I'm pretty sure it would also be billable, you know, when you go through the Medicaid, things like that, so.
The issue is that a, a great deal of each of our school psychologists coming is being up through testing for special education services. That has to be done by school psychologists rather than nurse practitioner, just the, the COMR requirements for that require school psychologists. And then if, if student services is looking at more counseling services or social services, that's.
Right, if we were looking towards that, it would be, I'm sorry, as far as research for psychology?
Yeah, I mean, certainly if, if it's for counseling services, we could look at a broader range of certifications, but for the special education assessments, that does need to be completed by a certified school psychologist.
I understand what you're saying, sorry, for counseling services, we could look at licensed social workers.
Depending on the, you know, the certification of the person. But so much of the time of our school psychologists is spent with testing and then being in IEP meetings where that particular certification is required.
Is there anyone else, I know the school psychologist is on the list for doing it, is there anyone else that is certified to be able to give these tests? Or is that it? For, for the, you know, like when you're testing for special needs?
Special education testing? The, the state regulations call for a certified school. The state regulations call for a certified school psychologist. That's what the state's expectation is in terms of certification for the person administering the cognitive assessments, social, emotional assessments.
All right, thank you.
Mr. Davis?
No, no questions.
I have any questions? Thank you.
Mrs. Fowler, thank you very much for digging deep to find the personnel we need to meet our special education students' needs. I know each year it is a challenge for you, and I know you do everything in your power to have the personnel to meet the needs of our students. Thank you for all that you do. You sincerely appreciate it. Ms. Long, welcome to your new position in student services.
Thank you.
And look forward to working with you. Thank you.
No questions?
I do have to say, Mrs. Kilcoyne is the one who has been very proactive in contacting companies and getting this brought to closure. I really appreciate it.
It's a team effort. Thanks all of you in the special education department.
You know, I want to commend our human resources department as well, because they really have done beyond in trying to help us with this.
And we continue, and if anybody out there is a school psychologist, a certified school psychologist, please come to St. Mary's County and enjoy the splendor that is the Mother County.
And Mrs. McCordson, congratulations to your staff members and human resources for
all that they do. Thank you.
I know, just, I know of two students who graduated from college and have, are tempted to get into a school psychologist master's program, and A, there are not very many around.
Right.
There are very few slots, and it's incredibly competitive. I think like the class, one of the classes at Temple, they only take like 18 students a year. So it's, it's not like there's a plethora of people running around.
Well, and that's part of the problem, as it is with related service providers, too. There are limited seats and programs across the country, and.
Mm-hmm, yep. All right. Anyone have anything else? Okay, may I have a motion for this action item?
I move that the Board of Education approve the professional services contracts for special education and Department of Student Services by the providers recommended for speech and language, occupational therapy, orientation and mobility services, physical therapy, and school psychologist for a grand total of $2,279,512 in one cent, special education, and $97,125 for student services, with funding sources from medical assistance, local contracted therapists, and federal pass-through and parentally-placed pass-through grants.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Thank you very much. Mr. Witten? Some scoreboard replacements?
Good morning.
Good morning.
Hey, before you, as I was talking about middle school and high school scoreboard replacements, the average age of the scoreboards in the secondary schools that fill it high is 18 years of age. Life expectancy of these is 15 years. The project was, this project to replace all of them was identified in 2013 after several school board failures. During those failures, the manufacturer informed us that they were no longer manufacturing repair parts. The parts that we did come across to do repairs were actually on the shelf. Opticons. That's how far we run our equipment out.
That's a little scary.
So the high school, the high school, this is a replacement project, so we're not adding, the only new would be the, would be the appearance, the aesthetics. The light board colors are different, the red instead of the faded white. And we're going to incorporate wire and wireless, so they'll be able to do both, and that'll help particularly during the wrestling. Two school boards separately, two different weight classes on either side of the gym. That came up during the question and answers as we worked with the AEDs. So each high school currently has and will have two scoreboards, both of them six foot by 10. Shot clocks, and both the shot clocks will be replaced in the gym evening, which includes a new control console, wire and wireless has the option. They'll have both, they have, the option isn't how they operate it, I apologize. Each school is in the process of providing me their colors. If they'd like the school board and the final team logo, what they would like on there, whether they wanted the same home or the Raiders. Basically, like I said, the colors, the white outline, white outline, the red, where it says ID would be where the logos go. Controller is to the, yes, to the left of the screen, and the shot clocks are just simple. The middle school, again, is a replacement. Each of the middle school has one scoreboard, which is typically located in the middle of the gym, and has two shot clocks, of course, each end of the gym. Both, again, this will, these scoreboards are a little smaller, they're six by eight, and they don't include timeouts left. Field on the scoreboard, which I'll show you in a moment. And they have, be able to operate wire, wireless, they'll have their choice of colors, and again, the team logo and protective screen. Larger scoreboard in this. This area here on the larger screen, on the larger screen, would be the timeout, timeout and the only, and it takes about two foot off. Same controllers and shot clocks. We have used this contract, before I get into the contract structure, I would like to say we have used this contract. Opticon in Leonardtown, we utilized this contract. The option was available to us. Staff is seeking approval to utilize the Keystone Purchasing Network. Offers a 10% discount on new equipment. Contract is valid through February 2018 with two additions. Standard 2012. Contract will meet the needs of the school system for these new installations, which were at $85,470. Ongoing repairs, not of scoreboard, well, hopefully not of scoreboards, but we do have other Dectron products in the system. Prepayment method, Board Policy Regulation DJC, DJC, urges the use of publicly-bidded procurement methods or cooperative purchasing contracts are permitted by Maryland State. Article 5, Article 13. We are recommending, we recommend to approve this agenda item as presented.
When are the new?
Right now, we're looking at the end of September, the beginning of October. They're all customized with the color, and then they have, we have to schedule or ask. We won't, we won't be shutting down a scoring event to put these in. Most of these are a day installation. The longest one may be Leonardtown High School. Shot clocks, the transmitters. Be very conservative. Yeah, we'll be very conservative in the schedule.
How long's the? Warranty, yeah, I'm sorry, I couldn't think of the word. I'm like, in my mind, yeah. How long is the warranty for?
One year.
I think it was higher than that. I don't have copies with me right now.
I thought I saw it in some of the documents that you provided for us.
I didn't.
It's in the detail sheet, which I don't have. I thought there was.
Yeah, it's at the bottom of the detail sheet.
Okay, well, you, I'll can go.
Five-year warranty parts coverage.
In every contract.
Yep.
Okay.
That's it. No, I had, that's all right, I just showed you, I was looking for it, and I didn't see it.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Davis?
Are, you mentioned the two high school replacements, Opticon and Leonardtown. Are those scoreboards, are they functional now? Then why replace them?
And then longer get parts. If they fail again, we will not be able to.
We'll just replace them when they fail.
Decision was made in 2013 that that wasn't an option. Courtesy of the event goers in the school.
Well, okay. It just seems to me that they could fail tomorrow, they might fail three years from now. If they fail three years from now, we're not spending the money, you know, we're spending 2020 money.
Imagine if the board desires, we can change our methodology, the problems that occur, this is a capital project, this is not an operating fund project.
Yes, sir.
We would have to have a greater level of flexibility in our operating budget. What the implications of that are beyond. That was, that was the reason this path was taken, I guess, was.
Right, so it's already been, it's already in our CIP.
Oh, I understand that.
For this year. But I mean, I'll play devil's advocate, I mean, let's say my son or daughter is a senior in high school, and they're playing their senior night game at Leonardtown High School for basketball and the scoreboard, you know, I mean, the, and I'm sure Dr. Roper can attest to, you know, what, you know, and, you know, if it's an important game, it's playoff implications or, you know, championship implications, there's a lot of, I guess, issues that would have to be addressed immediately during the course of a basketball game or a wrestling match in order to, you know, make sure that everything was in accordance with SMAC rules in order to continue and have that be a valid competition, you know, competitive game.
Well, I freely understand you have a life cycle on all this equipment. I guess you hear the old expression, you know, if it's working, don't fix it. And I'm always looking at how we can control costs. Obviously, we all are on the board. And so, like I said, that the boards could fail tomorrow, or they might last five years. If you had a contractor that could come in and replace a board quickly, is that, is that an option, or is it, are these esoteric, are they specific to each school, and it takes a long time to build them?
About four to six, it's about four weeks, four to six weeks, to get a replacement board.
Okay, all right, that kind of answers my question, and you can't just, it can't be a plug-and-play, so to speak.
If I may, just, there's this comp, very complicated balancing act. When is the right time to do, and I'm not speaking about just this subject, all of Patient from the public, and then there's right time.
Sure, I understand.
A lot of, I don't want to leave you with the impression that these things aren't thought of outside of a map. From my perspective, I mean, there's a lot of consternation sometimes about where we can afford to disappoint all portions of the school or the public, and where we, and where we can't fail there before, and what seems to the limelight or heads. There is a lot of thought, and there's a lot of.
I understand. Now, on the grade middle school that you're not replacing.
Oh, no, all three are getting done.
Oh, you are, all three?
All four elementary, oh, yeah, I wish I only.
Four elementary schools.
All, all, all secondary schools, so all your middle schools and all your high schools.
Okay, I misunderstood.
Leonardtown Middle, I, for the meeting, I thought about, you know, which ones are the worst, Opticon High, Leonardtown Middle. All have their problems in different areas. Some is the wiring inside the wall, some is the controllers, some is the transmitters.
Just a comment, I built my garage 20 years ago, I put a 20-year roof on, asphalt roof. I went out and inspected it, and I could probably get another three, four years. So I elected to wait three, four years, even though maybe there'd be some escalators, escalation calls, as opposed to replacing it now. It's working, it's not leaking, and so that's sort of what my thinking is on the scoreboard. I have no other questions.
I mean, my only other comment is, I agree with you, I think we do have an expectation of the community and the students, and for some of those kids, I mean, you know, that's, you know, that's the sport for their life, you know, and that's, that's what they live for, and that's, you know, they have spent a lot of time and effort in the course of even getting to high school and playing and practicing and, and everything, and I don't want to have anything fail on our part that would take away from that experience for those students. Secondly, I think a lot of our facilities are also used by parks and rec on the weekends, so, you know, it's not just our students that are reaping the benefit, it's also the community with basketball leagues, soccer, you know, leagues, everything that still are in our schools when our own sports teams and students are in there as well. So it's, it's also, it's, it's not just a benefit for St. Mary's County Public School students, there's also the aspect of the county parks and recs programs running through those, those buildings as well. Mrs. Washington?
The technology is being enhanced exponentially, so it is more cost-effective for us to replace the scoreboards. Instead of trying to find hard, to find outdated and outmoded parts, we can replace our old 15-year technology scoreboards with new up-to-date scoreboards. And we have to consider the failure rate as well, and it's, we need to replace these scoreboards before we have a failure. Thank you.
I think your second slide captures this quite well, that the fact that the average age of the scoreboard boards in the high schools is 18 years, with an average life expectancy of 15 years, and that it was four years ago that we began experiencing multiple failures of these boards, and you have, as you have across the system, whether it's roof projects or anything else, you have worked to, to maintain and to repair whenever possible. But at the same time, I think it's important for us, as we've demonstrated, to have that strategic plan that says there are things in infrastructure that we are going to address over time, because the more we defer, we get to a point where the costs are so high to address all of the issues that we cannot possibly do so, and that's when we get into backlogs. You know, I look at the, the infrastructure of the United States, the bridges and the roads and the highway systems that have not been maintained, not have been updated, and now we're at a point where we're likely facing multiple failures of, of these huge systems that are going to have a huge economic impact. And so I think I would rather address this now, pay for it in $2018, and have this as something off our plate for the next 15 to 20 years, and, and have a functioning system than to try to continue to put it together with bubble gum and chicken wire.
Ebay.
Yeah, or Ebay.
If you want to Ebay for replacement parts, you need to probably be thinking about a bigger plan.
Yeah. Now, with the scoreboards that, that are, that are going to be replaced, what will happen with the old scoreboards? I know that a lot of things that we have, you dismantle them and you sell things, I would imagine, so how will these be, how will these be disposed of?
We have that option at this point, to either have the contractor dispose them, or we can try selling them, and we may end up taking the controllers out of them and seeing Because of the age of them, I talked to the contractors, there's two in particular, removing them from the wall may destroy the.
Right.
Because they've been painted at least two times, so they're probably good and stuck to the wall.
Got it.
But there is a controller in the middle of the scoreboard behind the casing, if it does have value, on Ebay.
Right. Right. Well, and so what I, what I want the public to understand is when we replace things, whether it's, you know, something within a building furniture, we, we find ways of outsourcing that or, or getting, being compensated in some fashion. And that's something you all go to great lengths to try to accomplish whenever possible.
We use GovDeals.com for auctions or any, any items that we have that have residual value. Try to get something for them to keep them out of the landfill.
Exactly.
A lot of the older stuff is built with metals that are expensive today that were very cheap.
Thank you very much.
May I have a motion for this recommended action?
I move that the Board of Education of St. Mary's County approve the use of the Keystone Purchasing Network Contract KTN-A 201601-12 with Dectronics Incorporated for the purchase of basketball scoreboards and display replacement parts and repairs as described in the amount of $95,468.
Have a second?
I second.
Others in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Thank you very much. All right. Camp Inspire, we heard about it at the beginning and we will close with it.
Right, we started with warm words and Mr. Aiello, you've been so patient and look at that. Here we get to finish with you.
Well, good morning again, and this is what you've been waiting all morning for.
We have.
We have something really fun coming up. Ms. Kristy Bishop, who is the recreational specialist for Parks and Rec, was with us earlier. She was not able to stay. As you know, we, Camp Inspire is a partnership between St. Mary's County Parks and Recreation and St. Mary's County Public Schools with dual funding. And we always want to recognize and thank our Parks and Rec partners. And Ms. Bishop does a great job every year organizing things for us, et cetera. But to share the presentation this morning, I have with me Mr. Rocco Aiello, who you will recall was the 2008 National Teacher of the Year for Adapted Physical Education. Our own Mr. Aiello is, just does a fabulous job with us in special education and then with both youth and adults in the community who have special needs. So Mr. Aiello is the inspiration behind Camp Inspire and he's going to tell you about the program this summer.
Good morning and thank you for allowing us to speak about a wonderful program that we have in our community. As you know, it's a collaboration between Recreation and Parks and St. Mary's County Public School. And I'm a real, a firm believer in that school-community partnership. Currently, we serve 45 children with autism, spectrum disorder from the tri-county area with most campers living in St. Mary's County. We've had one child this year coming out from Calvert, about an hour and a half drive. In the past, we've had children from Charles County as well. We were very fortunate to be located at Green Holly Elementary School and it's a great location for us and the functionality of the school works very well for us because the rooms, the gymnasium, the cafeteria, all in one line, very neat for our children. Our staff consists of one director, one assistant director, six specialists, 14 instructors, and with the great support of our special ed, behavioral specialist upstairs. And we're very fortunate to have that. One of the neat things about our camp is we have eight peer assistants this year assisting campers in all aspects of the, our program. Those could be brothers or sisters, relatives or friends. And that is what's important about our camp is that it's very inclusive in nature. Some of the things that we do in camp is that it's, we do a lot of community outings. This past year, we did canoeing, fishing, crabbing. We do bicycle riding. In the past, we've gone to PAX Adventure, PAX Naval Base, we're at the public library, just as some of the many things that we do. Structured activities are cooperative games and motor activities, which are dear to my heart, yoga, arts and crafts, music, sensory integration, again, social skill instruction. And that's where we employ our peer assistants to help us with that endeavor. And also very important is our onsite extended school year service. That's where our St. Mary's Public School employees come in, provide that extended service to our children that are housed at Green Holly at that time. We also have a program called Project Inspire, which is a program that we started a few years ago for those young adults aged 15 to 21. And what we wanted to do there is to help them to gain more knowledge about the work environment. So we work on building resumes, developing effective communication schools, which is very paramount, participate in mock interviews and wear attire appropriate for work. All of which are very important for, for our young adults as they start to get into the employment world. And students participate in a variety of work-related experiences, offer hands-on instructions to create a positive interest for employment. And as you can see by the picture, every summer, we've been going to Firehouse Subs and they've allowed our students to do all of the work-related skills in that restaurant. They enjoy having our, our kids and our, our young adults love going there. The benefits of Camp Inspire from a parent's perspective, Camp Inspire has given my son hope that he will be able to learn to socialize, work with his peers and learn the basic life skills to build his future. From a staff member who's a former, a former staff member, working at camp helped me to gain communication, problem-solving and life skills that I have used throughout my academic and professional career to become a DPT. And this young lady graduated Leonardson High School as a peer assistant of ours in adapted phys ed, joined us at Camp Inspire as an instructor, went on to college, and now she just received her doctorate in physical therapy. So you can see that not only are we, our focus is on our children with autism, but we also surround ourselves with other young adults that are moving forwards into careers that are in special education needs. Thank you for allowing me to share and our wonderful program.
Any comments?
I'm just curious as to how many students were able to participate in Project Inspire?
Currently, we have five and we are now looking at the possibility of expanding that program to other disabilities as well. We just don't want to make it autism, we realize there's a need. And we want to be a complement to the school system. So again, it's only a four-week program, but anything we can do to offer our, our young adults with unique needs that opportunity, we want to do that in the future.
Like I said at the meeting, while you were, I don't think, Ms. Fowler, I don't think you were here either. That was what I had spoke about, was about Camp Inspire. And I think I got to spend like, it was over, well over two hours with you and with the staff going through and, and seeing what the campers were doing and, and it was very exciting. I know that nine years ago, I had seen you start with the two weeks, one for the older and one for the younger students. And one of the things that I want to let everybody know, it, this camp has very highly qualified staff. So there are special education teachers, you talked about the physical therapists, you know, different people in there. And paraeducators are also spending their summer doing what they love. The reason I say that I know that they're doing what they love is, and I shared this in an email to you and to Ms. Fowler, was that one of the staff members, while we were speaking, came up very excited because one of the students that, or I shouldn't say students, one of the campers that was unable to, for years, be able to do the rock climbing wall, was able to at least put his foot on the first, whatever those things are called. That staff member was so excited. I mean, she's videotaping, she's running over to share with us, look, look what this camper did. So, you know, you can really see the excitement on the staff, staff's faces when a camper accomplishes something. So that really warmed my heart, knowing that they truly are there doing something they enjoy. I do look forward to, you know, and I know in your mind, you have wonderful things that you are looking forward to doing. I cannot wait to see those transpire. And also something else I want to share that you had spoken to me about before was that Camp Inspire has been a part of some research studies for people that are working on their masters or doctorates. So because you have a group of campers with a, one particular set of, I don't know if you want to say, set of.
Challenges.
Challenges, yeah. That researchers are able to come in and say, well, maybe, you know, this, this is what we're seeing, maybe we could do this in the future to help out these particular, this particular group of students, campers, you know, et cetera. So I think, you know, you've opened that up to research. And I know it has to be approved by parents, but I, I think overall, I mean, it has been such a wonderful thing for, things for these campers and for staff. And you've even said that where, you know, you, people are going on to their doctorates. Thanks for sharing that.
You're welcome.
And thanks for letting me come there and spend quite a bit of time. I know I was here well over two hours with you.
Just going back to your point on the rock climbing wall, it's a very important piece because it's really employs critical thinking skills for our children. And they have to traverse and they also have to go across midline. A lot of things are happening and everything that we do at camp is all research-based and we, we employ that within our lessons.
Thanks.
You're welcome.
Program's great. Congratulations on your effort. At the beginning, you talked about the collaboration between Parks and Recreation and public schools. Could you just embellish a little bit?
Sure.
What are they doing?
Well, basically, in the beginning, when I developed the program, I was originally going to be on my own as a company, but we decided to go to Rex and Parks because we want that school and community collaboration and basically to take care of registration, some equipment needs, insurance. And pretty much we, as a school system, we employ the sta, well, we employ the staff, they go through Rex and Parks. So it's, it, those pieces that we collaborate with.
I just echo Rita's thoughts and I mean, I know that you have expansion plans somewhere in your, in your head that, or, and or, and or on paper. And I do look forward to seeing what else you can do. I know, I know several people have attended the camp. I mean, their, their parents and guardians are just so thankful for, for this and, you know, for the skills and I think even the social interaction that it provides that might sometime be very difficult for them to find on their own, so.
Well, it's still morning, good morning. I spent my board report, which we could talk about one thing, and I talked about Camp Inspire as well. So this morning, Mrs. Weaver and I talked about Camp Inspire and the wonderful things you are doing, about your enthusiasm, how you say our students are moving and grooving and they were moving and grooving. And you consider the students your students and you take great pride in their accomplishments. So I'll give you a copy of what you missed, my board report, so you can see what I said about the program, about you, about the volunteers and thanking everybody for providing a wonderful opportunity, a learning opportunity for our students doing this summer, that all students in St. Mary's County are able to attend some kind of camp that needs, they have needs. And so I thank you very much for the tour. I had a wonderful time with the students and I was just elated. Thank you so much.
Thank you for showing up.
And I'm sorry, I had family in town and I was engaged with them and wasn't able to get there. But, but I know full well that you are a huge proponent of this and, and how effective it's been over any number of years. The number of students, the number of children in our community and the extended community who are being diagnosed with some, being somewhere on the autism spectrum is, is growing by leaps and bounds. And I think the work that you're doing to engage them and to find effective ways of assisting them and helping them to, to stand on their own, if you will, is, is just absolutely remarkable and so very much needed. I was, I was reading something online just yesterday about a parent who tried to, she was going on about trying to take her two twins and her, her five-year-old who's autistic to a water park along with, with another nephew. And, and how it worked up to a certain point and when it started to degenerate and to really fall apart, that there was one person who, one mom who stepped in to say, can I help you? And what a difference that made and how thankful she was that this person didn't look at her as though she was a bad parent or that she couldn't handle things, but rather stepped in to say, I'm here to help. And I see you very much in that role is I'm here to help. And thankfully, you have such extensive training and experience that all that you do just goes light-years beyond what any of us can do. And, and to really make such a significant difference in the lives of these, of these campers, of these children and by extension, their families.
Thank you. It's, every day when I wake up, it's very important that we always realize and recognize that we are constantly breaking down the social barriers. And it's a great opportunity for us to do that, to share our knowledge with people that don't understand what's going on. And it's a teaching moment, as I call it. And I welcome that every day when we have those opportunities, so thank you.
Thank you.
And just thank you. Please carry back to Ms. Bishop the warm words that were shared by the board there. Certainly great fans of the work. Yeah. And or visit us on Youtube.
Another viewer, yay. All right, board member time. Does anyone have anything else? Okay. All right, with that, the next meeting will be on Wednesday, August 30th, evening meeting. Still before the first day of school.
Still before the first day of school.
Right. And we are adjourned, but we will come back for a work session on the two policies. So we have 10 minutes.